My father says peace and what? I'm paying for what?
So Marty, let's start at the beginning.
I majored at Berkeley in peace and conflict studies. Everything changed for my generation two weeks into my freshman year. September 11th hit. That's what drove me to join the Peace Corps.
Berkeley.
Rural Africa to Manhattan. I got into Fordham Law School in New York City.
Somehow you end up of all places in Mississippi.
The judge I worked for, who's an incredible mentor of mine, Judge James Graves. He encouraged me to go to DC. So I ended up moving on and working in Congress for the first time. US House of Representatives, you know, the big house.
This is like a pivotal point in your life. You're like one step away from like the big leagues.
I know. I have a full-time job and I have a great career going on in the federal government and I'm rising through the ranks. Or I could give it all up.
Hey guys, welcome back to the show. Today we have a very special guest. This special woman went from Scripps Ranch to Africa, to DC, to Mississippi, back to Scripps Ranch. Local native San Diegan council member, Marnie Von Wilper. Marnie, welcome to the show.
I'm so thrilled to be here. Thank you for having me.
So Marty, I mean, we've been trying to do this for like how long?
Over a year. I emailed you probably a year ago and said, hey Ray, let's have coffee. And then I ghosted. I'm not gonna lie.
Oh, I'm so glad you came clean on that. Cause you ghosted me. Then you showed up at one of our events. You had a big check you're handing out to one of the, one of the charities that were here. And I'm like, Marnie, you ghosted me.
It's true. We got very busy at city hall and I apologize. And, and you know, then I brought a gift of bourbon to, you know, as reconciliation.
Oh my gosh. I'm so glad you brought that up because we are drinking bourbon, folks.
Cheers.
Cheers.
After work.
It is after work and kids don't do this at home. Or better yet, do it at home if you're gonna do it at all. But did I actually say that on a podcast? You brought me this bottle.
I did.
Tell me about this bottle of bourbon. It's fantastic, by the way.
It's very good. So Cask.
Cask and Coast.
Coast is now produced by my predecessor on the city council. Uh, he's a politician named Mark Kersey. He was in office from 2012 to 2020. And he's become a very good friend and a mentor of mine. And after leaving city council after doing his two terms, he now makes bourbon. So I like to joke that politics turned him to making alcohol.
It turned him to making alcohol. It turns us all to drinking alcohol.
Correct.
And what did you say earlier? Something about it is politicians, I have to have a little screw loose or something to get into this business?
We all have to have at least one screw loose up there.
We all suspected that, but I'm glad you came clean on that too. So, so Marty, let's start at the beginning. We're gonna talk a little bit about your journey. But um, you grew up in Scripps Ranch. Tell us about your childhood and, and the rest of it. That's very interesting.
So I grew up here in Scripps Ranch and my parents still live in the house that I grew up in. Uh, I went to Miramar Ranch Elementary School and Wagon High Middle School. I was one of the first classes to graduate from Scripps Ranch High School in 2001. I then went to UC Berkeley for undergrad and I won my first election. I got elected dorm president. By my freshman year. Yep.
Dorm president.
Dorm president. All 300 students in the dorm had to vote for me.
That's a lot of responsibility.
Yep. Uh huh. I mean, which parties to plan, you know, how many lunches we were gonna have.
Coed dorm or?
It was a coed dorm. Yes. In different floors.
Even more, more complexity to do that. It's a big job in college.
Yep. And the annual toga party was my big responsibility.
Awesome.
Yep. And, and it was a great, great place to be in school, great public school. But everything changed for my generation two weeks into my freshman year. Because I went to school in 2001. September 11th hit two weeks into my freshman year.
Oh my gosh.
So my responsibility as dorm president very quickly turned into telling all the students that our campus was shut down. United States of America was under attack. And then a few weeks later, we had to say goodbye to all of the 18-year-old students who were there on ROTC scholarships. Because they were being called up and deployed to foreign wars. First in Afghanistan and then in Iraq.
Okay. We didn't talk about any of this in our prep. Wow. Okay. So that is like trial by literally fire.
Yep.
So I mean, what was that like on campus with, I mean, you just made some new friends. They're in ROTC and then they're getting shipped off.
Shipped off to war.
To war.
Yeah. So we got very involved very quickly in international relations and what that meant for our country. So I majored at Berkeley in peace and conflict studies. My father says peace and what? I'm paying for what? And I said, come on dad, it's Berkeley. It's international relations.
Your father is a saint.
He is. Yep. I have a great dad. Um, and I decided then that with all of the foreign wars going on abroad and learning about peace and security and international relations, that's what drove me to join the Peace Corps when I graduated. I wanted to go abroad and represent the United States a little bit differently and try and bring peace in the world.
So, so you go to Berkeley, very prestigious university, right? You graduated with what major?
Peace and conflict studies. Helps in politics, turns out.
It turns out. Never heard of that major before, but you end up in Africa.
I did. Yes.
So you go from Berkeley to Botswana?
Yep. Rural Sub-Saharan Africa.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, and the way the Peace Corps worked when I applied is you could uh, make your preference known of a continent and a field of work. And I said, I want to do health work and I want to go to Africa. And the big envelope arrived at our house and I, we opened it in front of my, my parents' kitchen table. And it said Botswana. And we all said, where's Botswana? And we quickly learned and Googled and uh, the reason they were, President Bush the second was deploying Peace Corps volunteers to Sub-Saharan Africa was to help intervene in the worst AIDS crisis in world history. And so I was sent as a social worker to care for children who were born with HIV, whose parents had died of AIDS. And I had a lot of kids born with a very serious medical condition and I had to get them drugs to keep them alive.
Wow. Okay. So um, so you went from as a freshman in college to a really triggering emotional event, right? To again, then helping these HIV positive kids in Africa. Probably seeing them die too, right? I mean, so very emotional. I mean, wow, like.
Yeah. We had a saying in Botswana that Saturday was for funerals. Because so many people would die during the week on a Monday, on a Tuesday, on a Thursday, that we couldn't take off every weekday to bury people. We'd wait till Saturday and have all the funerals at once. But it wasn't all bad. There were a lot of really great things there.
Cause this podcast is turning into a little bit of a downer.
Yep. Yep.
Hold on. I think it's time for us to enjoy some of uh, some of those fantastic bourbon.
Political bourbon.
Political bourbon.
No, it was actually a pretty inspirational place. Um, I lived for two and a half years with no running water or electricity. Uh, in a, in a hut with a grass roof and I had the most wonderful host family who took care of me and I learned how to speak fluent Swahili. And my biggest priority for these young kids I was taking care of was one, getting the medication, which Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and President Bush, the, the second junior president Bush, he was wonderful in terms of getting AIDS drugs to kids in Africa. So we did. And we knew which tree to sit under. Every two weeks, the medical van would drive out two hours from the hospital and open up. But I also thought these kids need to be loved because children thrive when they're loved. Yep. So I would throw them birthday parties. I would ask my parents here in San Diego to get with the neighbors and our friends and mail me these big boxes of flour and sugar and chocolate chips. And I would make the best chocolate chip cookies I could over an open flame, cause that's what we cooked over. And we'd host these little birthday parties for kids, cause I wanted them to know they were loved, even though their parents had passed. And there were four young boys and my uh, my host family had adopted them all because their parents had died of AIDS. And one of them, Sean Ducani, he was only two years old when my host family found him walking on the one paved road we had in town. His parents had died miles away on a farm of AIDS. And he was now maybe, you know, six or seven years old. And he knocks on my door and he's crying. And I said, Sean Ducani, what's wrong? And he's watching all these other kids have birthday parties and he says, I don't know when my birthday is. Because he was so young when his parents passed, they never told him. And so I said, okay, Sean Ducani, you are the most special kid in the whole world because only you get to pick your birthday. No other kid gets to pick what day they want their birthday. So out of all the days in the year, what day do you want your birthday? And he says, tomorrow.
Of course. Of course.
We did. We had a birthday party for Sean Ducani the next day. And guess what? I heard from him pretty recently on Facebook, because my village now has electricity. He's now 19-year-old, years old and a goat farmer.
Wow.
Yeah. So he's doing great.
You must be pretty proud of that.
Yeah.
Wow.
So there's a lot of hope too. A lot of good stories kind of came out of Sub-Saharan Africa.
Amazing. And so, so you're there for a few years and then you decided to leave.
Well, I did. So that's when I decided to become a lawyer. Uh, so.
How dare you.
No, I know.
Almost ruined you, no.
Right.
I was gonna say some lawyer jokes, but we'll, we'll save that for a later date.
Deal. I mean, I love a good lawyer joke. Um, I have a good one if we have time at the end of the podcast.
Stay tuned for some good lawyer jokes. Oh, I forgot though. We also have a surprise.
We do.
At the end of the podcast. So.
I have some big news.
Big news. Marty's gonna share literally for the first time.
Yeah.
Big, big news. So stay tuned for that. So, so you left.
So I was, yes. So I decided to become an attorney and I was a social worker in Botswana, helping these kids. And I realized the one thing I couldn't help them with was the stigma and discrimination they faced through no fault of their own. Because they were born with this medical condition of having HIV. It was transmitted to them in the womb. And at sixth grade, 12 years old, if their meds started to fail, they would get the classic purple blotches on their skin of the Carposi scarcoma, which we've all seen in the movie Philadelphia, when Tom, um, oh my gosh, what's his name? The actor. He played in Castaway and Tom Hanks, yes, played um, yes.
Messing up here.
Yep. So these kids would get um, the symptoms of HIV and they'd get expelled from school. That's it. No high school for them, no college for them, because their teachers were terrified of their HIV and their AIDS condition. So I thought, you know what? This is wrong. Someone should sue. I'm gonna become a lawyer. And to do that, since I had no electricity where I lived, I would hitchhike for two and a half hours on the one paved road into town. I'd find an internet cafe. I would type out my law school application essays and email them to my mom here in San Diego. She printed them out and mailed them to law schools around the country for me. And that's how I found out. I got into Fordham Law School in New York City and moved from rural Africa to Manhattan. And that took a lot of therapy.
I was gonna say, you just like this shock therapy, basically.
Yes. I had a wonderful therapist.
Wow. So, so from, from hardly any electricity to like.
To Times Square.
Times Square. Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so you, you have Fordham.
Yep.
You're studying to be.
Well, they gave me a partial public interest law scholarship.
Okay.
See, I've always, my heart has always been in public interest. You know, growing up here in San Diego, my mom was my Girl Scout troop leader. And Girl Scouts is all about service. And she used to wake us up before high school, uh, once a week to go serve breakfast at a homeless shelter in Poway. And we did. And so she really instilled in me to give back to my community and that's always been my North Star. And so when Fordham offered a partial public interest, if I do into public interest law, they would help me with my law school tuition. I jumped at the chance and went to law school in New York City and I really loved it.
So how many Girl Scout cookies did you sell growing up?
Oh goodness. Uh, many, 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 many Girl Scout cookies. Um, you know, one of my favorite customers who grew up across the street from me on Sunset Ridge Drive, Scripps Ranch, folks will know that, was Steve Kushman, who now, you know, is a great hero in San Diego and a great business leader. Uh, I used to roll my little wagon over and his wife would buy them all. It was great.
That was pretty easy sales job.
Yep. And I still interact with Steve all the time now as a city council member. And I say, Steve, do you want to buy any Girl Scout cookies?
So did you ever freeze them in the freezer? Like the thin mints?
All the time.
You just eat them?
We eat them straight through.
They're just, eat them. They're done. I think it has to be a thin mint. Those, those things are like, yep. They're like, wow. They're really good.
They're good. The Samoas are my favorites. The coconut and the caramel and the chocolate.
You know, growing up, I liked those. I liked those.
Yeah.
Which one were the um, peanut butter?
Oh, what do they call them now?
Ding dongs or something?
Yes.
Huh?
Tagalongs. Yes. They have new names for them. They used to call peanut butter patties when I was a kid. Yep.
Okay. Tagalongs. Those are pretty good too.
They're really great.
Yeah. I think we still have a couple of boxes in the freezer.
Sprinkle them over ice cream. It's good in the summer.
Ooh.
Or blend them into a milkshake.
My daughter was a Girl Scout. I tried to teach her how to sell Girl Scout cookies in different packages.
Oh, I love that.
I wanted to see if she can scale it up and try to convince people to buy more Girl Scout cookies, to put them in the freezer for the summertime.
Yeah, I love it.
Right? But she was too young to understand that.
Yep.
Dad, I just want to go get my quota done so I can get my next badge or whatever it was back then. So, okay. So a good little sidebar there on uh, Girl Scouts. So, so you have Fordham, you're doing your thing, right? And somehow you end up of all places in Mississippi. Which I, I believe you said is where you learned about bourbon.
I did. Yes. Every good attorney and judge and advocate in Mississippi knows their bourbon. The deep south is known for this. Said the Bourbon Trail in Kentucky is fantastic. But it was quite a jump from New York City to a rural Mississippi, actually. And I, I love being a lawyer. It's such a great career for me. I mean, I could never do anything useful, like, you know, change a plumbing faucet or fixture in my faucet and I can barely do math, but I'm very good at being a lawyer and drafting laws. And so I graduated the top of my class, summa cum laude, on the national law court, or moot court team in the law review. And I didn't interview for a single law firm. Not one. I wanted to do public interest and help my country as I had in the Peace Corps abroad. I wanted to help my country here in America as well. To my poor father's chagrin, he said, can't you make some gosh darn money, Marnie? I mean, you're a lawyer. You should, ready? And instead I didn't. And um, I grad- graduated, yep, top of the class and I instead got a hundred thousand dollar grant from uh, Skadden ARPS. They do a fellowship for public interest students. And I wanted to help young kids with HIV and AIDS in Mississippi, um, just as I did in Africa. And it turns out Mississippi has the highest rate of AIDS in our country.
This is something that's news to me.
Yeah.
Cause I figured AIDS was kind of long gone. I mean, Magic Johnson's cured.
He's not cured. You always have it.
I know. I'm teasing, but you know, I mean, when Magic got it, it was, oh no, Magic. Remember that?
Yes, I do.
And Magic is, he's magic today. He's doing great, right?
Cause modern medicine is wonderful.
But the most, most people today, it's like, it's an afterthought. It's, it's an afterthought, right? But, but here we are in our own country.
Yep.
In Mississippi. I mean, it, people are affected and dying of this disease still every single day.
Yep. And I just, I never believed that we should put barriers on other people just because they have a medical condition or of who they are. Let everyone have an opportunity to succeed. You know, it's up to them to then, you know, take that opportunity. But you know, a young kid, just because they're born with something, doesn't, doesn't mean that they shouldn't succeed and have that opportunity. And so that's kind of what motivates me to do this work. And you know, same thing with kids who are diagnosed with cancer. We did some work with them too. And that turned into helping folks who are LGBTQ in the deep south and faced a lot of discrimination just because of who they are. And I had clients who were fired from their jobs because they had HIV. Uh, one client who was in an apartment building and her landlord found out during the day that she was HIV positive, evicted her on the spot. She came home to her furniture, her pots and pans, her clothes on the front lawn. I mean, this is all illegal under federal law. Um, and so I, I enjoyed it. Mississippi is a fantastic place. The history is just complex of, you know, the US there. But very interestingly, some of the best Italian food you ever want to find is in rural Mississippi.
Okay. Now you're speaking my language.
Uh huh. Yep.
Now you're speaking. So, so you're talking bourbon and Italian food now.
Yes.
So, so really, Italian food in Mississippi.
Yeah. And it was shocking to me, but uh, after the civil war ended and the United States finally abolished slavery, the Italian government decided that it was going to send over a lot of laborers to work on plantations on farms for paid wages, because slavery was no longer allowed, thank goodness. And so all these Italian families established roots in the deep south and the food is amazing.
But where are we going?
Yeah.
Let's go. Yeah. So, so we can do the Bourbon Trail, right? We can have some Italian food.
We can go to New Orleans.
We go to New Orleans. We're talking about Emperor's Palace.
Oh, yes. Everything is delicious in New Orleans.
I literally had the best filet I've ever had in my entire life there.
Yep.
I don't know what sauce. It must've been like 3,000 calories just for the.
Maybe 5,000.
It might've been 5,000. So um, yeah, wow. We can, we can, we can gain about 10 pounds together to do that trip.
We could.
That'd be fun. So, so you go from Mississippi and you end up in DC.
I do.
Like the big leagues.
Yes.
Right? Like, how's that happen?
Yes. Uh, so you know, Mississippi was great. It is also a very hard place to live. I lived uh, in Greendale, Mississippi, which is a wonderful place. I have a lot of friends there. I actually go back every year. But it was two hours away from the nearest airport, you know? And so I'm used to living either, you know, I want to be a little closer to things and in politics. And so I, I ended up uh, working for a federal judge my last year in Mississippi, after representing clients and starting the Civil Rights Clinic.
Kind of like the first taste of politics a little bit?
It did. Yeah. Yep. Um, the judge I worked for, who's an incredible mentor of mine, his name is Judge James Graves. He was a Mississippi State Supreme Court Justice before he became a Fifth Circuit Federal Judge. And the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals is right below the US Supreme Court. It represents Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi. And he was the first black man ever from Mississippi to be appointed and confirmed by the US Senate to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. President Obama nominated him and the US Senate confirmed him. And I learned so much from him about how really to be a true statesman, how to be a patriot, how to really look out for this country and, and how to civilly disagree with your colleagues. Cause you know, he's on a big appellate court. They don't agree on every decision. But he really taught me how to, to, to mature from this young, passionate advocate in the Peace Corps, all of this, to really thinking about how to grow my relationships with others, how to have civil conversations and how to listen. You know, I don't think enough of us listen enough in politicians. In my view of being in office for three years now, the biggest thing that would help our country is if all of us politicians learn how to shut up and listen more.
Yeah. There's a lot of, a lot of keyboard warriors out there too.
Yeah.
Like to talk a lot and not.
And not listen to each other. Yeah.
That's really great advice. Okay. Marnie for president.
Yeah. So, yep. So after that, yeah, he encouraged me to go to DC and, and work there. And, and I did. I worked for years as an appellate litigator. I was in federal law enforcement, actually. I worked for a federal agency called the National Labor Relations Board and we enforced the law around uh, labor rights in this country. And we enforced it for both businesses and workers, whoever broke the law. A lot of what I did was after uh, President Obama, his first uh, law that he signed was the Lily Ledbetter Fair Pay Act, 2009. Lily Ledbetter had been uh, in a high tech or a very high up C-suite employee at Goodyear for another 20 years. And she found out that the junior men below her were being paid more than her. And it was all because she was a woman. And she sued and her case went all the way to the US Supreme Court. Uh, and she lost. And the Supreme Court came down and said, well, you are right, Lily, you have proved that they discriminated against you and they deliberately paid you less because you're a woman. You proved that. No one questions that. But you didn't report it in time. And so you've lost because of the statute of limitations. It was a technicality. And her argument was, but they were hiding it from me. No one voluntarily says, hey Lily, we're gonna pay you less because you're a woman. How did I know how to report it? And so Congress passed, both houses of Congress, Senate and, and uh, representatives passed a law to fix that loophole so that women, if they found out they were being paid less than less qualified men, they'd have more time just to, just report it. It would toll it. Exactly. Just so they can make their case. And I got to go around um, helping women throughout the country get equal pay. And it was really nice. Um, and then I, I got.
Making women some money.
Right? Exactly. Especially, you know, if, if a woman is in the C-suite, she's very good at her job and why lose her if you're, anyway.
I'm with you in that. You know, um, I've always worked well with women.
Yeah.
I, so, so this, this show's about you, but a little bit about me real quick.
Yes, please.
So, so I've, my wife and I met in the third grade. We started dating in the seventh grade. We went to separate high schools. And so, and I went to a coed high school. And she went to an all-girls high school. And all my friends through high school were women.
Wow.
Cause I was the safe, I was the safe guy.
Exactly.
Right?
You were supportive. Yeah.
And, and um, and then when I went to, went to college and went on to work at Deloitte, all my friends at Deloitte, most of them.
Yep.
Women. And today I surround myself with women and I'm doing a podcast with a woman today.
Politician. Yeah.
So um, yeah. So that whole equal, I never really understood that, right? I understand the history and all the chauvinistic, all that stuff, right? But um, but yeah, you know, um, women, in my experience, are better than men in many respects, especially in business, right? So um, that's, that's fantastic. So you made women a lot of money.
Uh, yes. You know, I just made sure that they got what they were entitled to under law. They weren't asking for anything more. They were just asking for equal treatment.
Yeah, just fair treatment.
Just fair treatment. Um, you know, I have a good story about a family story about my grandpa. And, and uh, he was 102 when he passed away, just about a year and a half ago. Um, great grandpa, 102. He served as a captain in World War II.
So you have longevity in your family.
I hope so. Yes.
So you, you know, we're in the financial business over here. We need to talk about that longevity risk. We need to hedge.
Yes. Exactly. Yep. Yep.
102. That's unbelievable.
Yep. And I was his only granddaughter. I had, you know, two, two brothers in my family, 13 cousins. They're all boys. I was the only girl. So he spoiled me. And when my grandpa was born in 1919, his mother, my great grandmother, did not have the right to vote in this country. His mother couldn't vote because we had not yet passed the 19th amendment to the constitution. And he lived long enough to see his granddaughter run for office and win.
How cool is that?
Pretty amazing. But we are making progress. We are changing things and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then, um, so back to, to Washington DC. So I ended up um, uh, moving on and working in Congress for the first time in the US House of Representatives, you know, the big house. I had made it. I was working for a congress member.
The major leagues, basically.
Yep. I worked for Congressman Bobby Scott from Virginia. He's an incredible man.
How's that happen? Like, how do you go from Mississippi to DC and you meet up with some guy from, what'd you say, Virginia?
Virginia. Yes.
Like, just like networking?
Well, no, I became an expert in my field. So I was arguing in the US Courts of Appeals, uh, and doing labor law for the federal government, you know, enforcing the law. If a business broke the law, we'd go after them. If a union broke the law, we'd go after them. It didn't matter. We had to enforce labor rights. And I argued before both Merrick Garland and Brett Kavanaugh before, when they were in the DC Circuit Court of Appeals. And now one is the US Attorney General, one's a Supreme Court Justice. And I, people in Congress heard about me. And so I got sent over to, to help Congressman Bobby Scott, cause he is the, he was the chairman, now the ranking member, cause uh, he's in the minority over the Committee on Education and Labor. And so they asked me for my expertise on drafting national labor law. And they hired me and I loved it. I worked there for a year. And that's when I first, and I wanted to run for office.
Okay. Wow.
Yeah. I just, I saw people come in from all walks of life, all parts of our nation and explained to him their, their issues and their problems and their challenges. And then we got to go back and craft laws to help people. And it was wonderful. And I thought, maybe I could do this too.
So you're in DC. So you're like an underling, right? And.
They literally gave me the keys to the congressional offices. I got to give tours on the weekends to my friends. It was great. It's okay. They're public buildings, everybody. Everyone's allowed in.
So that's, so there's, there's this, I don't even want to go there. This famous photo of some guys having some fun with each other. So they had a key. So, so the people have keys? Like.
We do.
They just hand out keys? I was always curious, like, how does that even happen? Like, so people have keys?
We do. I mean, cause those are our workplaces. You know, we have congressional hearings. We have to open the door in the mornings.
But you can get into different chambers and all that.
We can. Oh yeah. Yep. Oh, there, there is security 24/7 at the Capitol. So every building has security. So, you know, that's important.
Okay. So, but, but you're not doing any funny business. You're just doing tours for your friends.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool. I mean, I got to spend some time in DC. Um, we won't go there on, on, on this episode, but, but um, you know, uh, what I learned from the time that I was in DC is DC is like a bubble, right? Do they say like inside the loop or whatever?
Yes, inside the Beltway.
Inside the Beltway. That's what they say out there.
Which is the highway system.
And like, and like everyone in DC, they know each other. Like you guys, you barbecue together, you, you know, you go to the bars together. Doesn't matter which side of the aisle you're on or whatever. Like, like it's like, the people are in DC, they all work together.
We do.
And um, and from the outsider's perspective, it's like everyone in DC against the rest of us. Right? Like, 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 so I'm talking to my dad's attorney years ago. He's like, yeah, so um, so I was at uh, at this party and uh, there's Brett Kavanaugh over there and I got my, my friend's daughter, you know, was clerking for him. And I mean, and they all like know each other. It was crazy. And then um, someone worked for Ginsburg back then. And it was, it was just, you know, it could be, um, it could be like the daughter of a Republican, you know, clerking for a Democrat, you know, justice. And so like political party, like almost appeared like it didn't really matter, except for when it was game time. Like they put their jerseys on, they're like, I'm, I'm on this side or I'm on that side. It was really fascinating world to me. It was really fascinating world to me. Like DC, this, this inside the Beltway kinda, kinda thing that's going on there, like, very interesting. Very interesting for someone that grew up in Poway, you know, your Scripps Ranch. But you got a chance to like go into that world, right? And work in that world and rub elbows with all these people and keys and like, that's, that's amazing. So, so somehow you've got this like decision to make.
I do.
Right, like this is like a pivotal point in your life.
Yep.
Like, you are like, um, you know, you're like one step away from like the big leagues, right? And so tell us about that.
Yeah, uh, so the time was, uh, 2015, 2016, um, you know, I, I just helped draft my first law in Congress and I was shepherding it through congressional hearings and I really loved it. And then the 2016 election happened and President Trump got elected. And I just knew in my heart that I wasn't gonna be a good fit for the Trump administration. He did not resonate with my values. You know, one of the reasons that I ran for office is because I believe that no matter where you're from, who you are, who you love, what religion you ascribe to, what you look like, you deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. And you deserve a government that promotes dignity and respect of all people. And I, I just didn't feel that we, 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 we dived in that, in that way. And so I thought, I could stay here, you know, I, I, I have a full-time job, uh, and I have a great career going on in, in the federal government and I'm rising through the ranks. Or I could give it all up and I could move back home to California and run for office myself and try and make a difference in my hometown. The thing is, I, I had no job lined up in California. I couldn't even get a job because I hadn't taken the bar exam in California yet. I wasn't licensed to practice law here. Remember, I went to rural Mississippi for my first bar exam. So I had to decide, do I give up my career and my job and my friends? Or do I go home on a whim and try and run for office?
So you had to decide between what's easy, yet personally conflicted.
Yep.
Right? Versus give it all up, move back home.
Yeah.
With mom and dad.
Move back home with mom, dad, yep.
Yeah, encroaching on their privacy. Eating all their food again, you're unemployed.
Unemployed, yeah.
Not to mention, you've, you've had these great experiences and, you know, you're still not making any money. Your dad's probably like, come on!
He is, yeah, I'm still in public service.
Don't worry dad, she's in politics. I mean, there's a lot of very wealthy politicians out there.
Figure that out yet, if anyone has the secret to getting wealthy in politics, please let me know.
Okay, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna explore that. We're gonna do an expose on how to make money in politics. Marnie and I, we're gonna do it undercover.
I'm just a public servant and I love it, but, yep.
It's amazing how, how like nice you are. Like, you're just like this, like genuine person that really cares about people.
I do.
Right, now if it shows up one day, like really it's all about the money, oh, watch out. That's gonna be terrible, you'll make me look bad. But no, you really are, I mean, so, so, so you had like, almost like easy, easy street to like, I don't know, call it fame or whatever, notoriety inside the, the Beltway. And you chose, you know, I'm gonna do it my own.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start over from scratch, almost from scratch. I mean, you were an attorney, but you just weren't licensed as one in, in California. So you went, you, you passed the bar, obviously, cause you're an attorney today.
Yes, yep.
And mom and dad were like celebrating, yeah! And, and you said, okay, well, how do I get to where I want to go? And what'd you do?
Yep, again, to my poor father's dismay, I turned down every law firm and I worked in public service still and, uh, I got a job as a deputy city attorney here in San Diego, in the city. I knew that if I wanted to run for city council in San Diego, which is, which is the eighth largest city in the nation, we are a big city, I needed to learn how the city government works. If I was gonna be effective and be a good representative for my constituents, let's start now. And so I became a deputy city attorney and I worked there for two years and I loved it. And the thing is, what I did for the people of San Diego is I was a civil prosecutor. I sued businesses that broke the law and undercut all of the law-abiding businesses who were actually trying to do the right thing. There were, uh, uh, financial companies who would come in and pretend to sell senior citizens fake annuities, you know, door to door and, and wrap up their life savings in false investments. I mean, horrible, they'd steal from these seniors. Uh, we sued big companies who polluted our environment. We, we sued Monsanto for polluting our bay, Mission Bay, and they're cleaning it up as we speak. Uh, we sued employers who wouldn't even pay their workers minimum wage. I mean, how is anyone supposed to get a foothold in life if you're being undercut on your wages?
Are these businesses even able to like do this in this day and age? It's crazy.
Well, well, that's why you need law enforcement to come in and, and it's so unfair to the good businesses in our city who are doing the right thing and trying to empower their employees. And, and so I loved it, but I thought, you know, I could help individual cases, case by case, one at a time as it comes in. Or if I run for office, I might be able to draft laws that help everyone at once. And so that's why I threw my hat in the ring in politics and ran for office.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So, um, so you talked about businesses, right? So I'm, I'm a business owner, small business owner here in San Diego.
And a very great business, Lucia does so much for our community and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, it's everything we can do to give back. I mean, family's been here for many decades.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm my grandfather and then my father, then me and the rest of my family. My cousin is my partner and so forth. I mean, it's just, just fantastic to be able to help so many San Diegans.
Yes.
Like I always say, like, one of the greatest honors that you can have is, is helping people with their retirement.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, that's what we do.
And live their golden years in dignity.
Yes, exactly. So we work really hard at helping people that way. But as it relates to businesses and business owners, like, you know, what did you learn working within the city council or through politics? Like how you best can help us business owners on a local level?
So the best way I've learned to help business owners is by getting government out of your way. I, yeah, I cannot tell you how many calls I get from business owners who are trying to open up a new restaurant and cannot get their permits out of development services. They're waiting for months and months and months. Or I had a business owner call me who, who didn't get their water bill for 12 months and they got hit with a $12,000 water bill. And then they can't get ahold of them, but in customer service, because our customer service is so bad. I told them, I don't want you spending hours waiting on customer service. I want you focusing on your business and growing our economy. I will help you get through the government bureaucracy so that you can do what you want to work to do. And so that's what I've really focused on helping. And, you know, when I got elected was, uh, 2020, so the middle of the pandemic. And so we focused hard on helping businesses get through that in San Diego. And I pushed the city council to create a, uh, we have all these committees. We have the infrastructure committee, the environment committee, the land use committee. I'm the chair of public safety, I love being the public safety chair. I support our police officers, our firefighters, our ambulance workers, our lifeguards. But during COVID, I said, we have to create a COVID-19 response and recovery committee because business owners and residents have to know their city council is listening to them in this really dire crisis. And we did, and the Chamber of Commerce came in and told us what they needed. Uh, you know, residential senior care came in, told us what they needed and we were more responsive. Uh, so that is what we need to do is make sure that, you know, government is there for a reason and we all, of course, appreciate it and we want to make sure that when you call 911, somebody arrives on time. At the same time, small businesses shouldn't be hampered by government bureaucracy. And so if I can help them get to that, that'll help them succeed.
Wow, that, now that's a campaign slogan, if I ever heard one. So, um, so speaking of campaign slogans, so we teased at the beginning of the show, he has some big announcements for us.
News.
Like huge news, right? And so.
It's very new, new, this is brand new too.
I, I'm so honored that you're gonna share this here on, on the show. So, uh, let's have it, are you guys ready? Anyone got a drum roll? Maybe in post, we can put a drum roll.
There you go.
And, 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 um, yeah, let's hear it.
Yeah, so you know, um, I now am very honored to have been reelected to a second term in city council and I can only do two terms, I will be termed out. And so my first jaunt in politics has been city council and I've decided to take the next big step. And I am now running for the state senate of California, which is the fourth largest economy in the world.
Way.
And this is the first time I've announced it publicly.
Wow, that's so exciting.
Yeah.
So you went from Scripps Ranch to, to Africa, back to New York, to Mississippi, to DC, to San Diego, to a state of California potential repres, uh, Senator.
Potential Senator, I would love to be our Senator, yes.
Holy cow, and so how many senators are there in, in the state of California?
There are.
Well, this isn't like.
Correct, is it not federal? Yep, I am not running against, um, uh, the federal candidates for, for federal state senate. No, this is California state senate, so I will be going to Sacramento. Uh, there are 40 state senators and we have 39 and change million people in California. So I will be representing about a million people if I win.
Fantastic.
It's a big district.
And so that's, that's for the 2026?
2026, correct.
So you're, so you're really just at the beginning.
I am just the beginning, we opened the campaign a few weeks ago and I've learned with these humongous districts and elections, you really do have to start two years ahead of time.
And I mean, it, it's a money game now, right? I mean, it's really about raising money and getting the word out.
Yep, yeah, I know, I mean, it, it's, I'm, I'm still dismayed that there is still so much about money in politics and, and I'll, I'll be perfectly honest, that's what I spend most of my time doing, is raising money. I am not at a level yet where I can really change that. But people ask, well, why do you have to raise so much money? It's because I have to communicate with literally almost a million people. And those mailers out the door, in the mailboxes, there are people who still read them, the digital ads I have to do, I have to film them, I have to place them on people's Facebook and Instagram, radio ads, if I get to the senate level, TV. And it costs a lot of money to communicate with that many voters. Um, I hope to, to change that someday, but for now, I'm, I'm honored by the support and I'm very excited about going up to Sacramento and learning more and doing more. And, you know, one of my big issues as a public safety chair, uh, and I work hand in hand with our police officers on this, is protecting our kids from gun violence. You know, I just, um, I, I grew up in the Columbine generation. I will never forget sitting on my parents' couch, I was a junior at Scripps Ranch High School, turning on the news and seeing young high school students streaming out of their high school with their hands folded behind their heads because their fellow students had just been murdered in their classrooms.
First big.
It's the first big one. And then two years later, here in San Diego in 2001, at Santana High School, we had a school shooting.
I remember Santana.
That was almost the day I graduated high school in our hometown. Yep, one of my friends survived that school shooting. And so I thought, you know what, we need to do better. I, I am personally, I am not worried about the responsible lawful gun owners, that's not who keeps me up at night. It's the people who can't pass a background check, that's who keeps me up at night. And so the very first law that I passed when I got elected in 2020, was the first ban in California on illegal ghost guns. So we had a shooting in the, in the Gaslamp District in April of 2021. I had just been sworn into office in December of 2020 and four months later, we have this mass shooting. A guy was walking down the street and killed the 28-year-old valet driver and then turned around and shot four tourists. And one of them was a Scripps Ranch resident, actually, just going to dinner. He got tackled by good Samaritans and arrested and the chief of police called me to brief me on the incident. Chief David Nesley at the time, he said, council member, this is what happened, there's a fatality, there's four other victims. And I learned about the shooter's history. And he said the shooter had had prior violent felony convictions, a severe mental health history, which is why he's walking down in the middle of the Gaslamp shooting people. And so I said, chief, how does a man with prior violent felony convictions pass a background check to get a gun in California? And the chief said to me, Marnie, he didn't, he had a ghost gun. And I said, chief, what is a ghost gun? I mean, I had been a deputy city attorney and I wasn't familiar with this. He said, well, Marnie, that it's, it's a way that you can bypass a background check. You can buy the unassembled parts of weapons, the frame, the lower, the slide, and you can make them at home. And the reason they call them ghost guns is because there's no serial number on them. So when police find them at a homicide, they disappear in our system like a ghost, they're untraceable.
Right.
So I thought, you know what, that is a loophole that should be closed. And so like I said earlier on the podcast, I am not good at plumbing fixtures, I can't do math all that well. I have people who help me with that, but I can write a law. And so I knew.
A pretty logical law.
Exactly, exactly. What law-abiding gun owner wants to have an untraceable gun at home?
Right, none.
None. So I thought, you know what, if you want.
So you're not anti-law-abiding gun owners.
Not at all.
You're anti-ghost guns, getting in the hands of the wrong types of people.
Correct, yeah, I'm not worried about responsible gun owners, they're doing fine, they're doing what they should. I'm worried about the people who want to shoot a school, a place of worship, an office or themselves, that's who I'm worried about. And so I thought, you know what, if you want to sell the parts, the unassembled parts of weapons, the lower, the frame, the receiver, the slide, the trigger bank, fine, gun stores, sell them all you want. But put a serial number on each part of a weapon so that those are treated like registered weapons, just like a fully assembled firearm. So to buy the parts of a weapon, you have to pass a background check. And then that way, and when you assemble it at home, they will be serialized. And if they are ended up in a crime, the cops will be able to trace it. And so we did, we passed the law at city council, first one in California, first city to do it because we had that mass shooting. And, uh, the mayor, Todd Lawyer, signed my law and within 10 minutes I got sued. We clocked it.
Of course she did.
Yep, and that, and that is our right under the constitution, I don't begrudge that. You know, it's, it's okay if you want to sue in the courts. But guess what? The federal court in San Diego upheld my law and said it is not a second amendment violation just to require background checks to buy the parts of weapons, that's it.
Yeah.
I had a high school student in our district at Del Norte High School help me with this project. Uh, his name is Stefan Abrams and, you know, high school kids are under lockdown training.